It's not a big bald spot on my. The reflection of mine is horrendous.
It looks like it's going top, so as soon as.
So much.
Yeah. So for that.
Yeah, looks like you can go.
Okay, well, it's seven o'clock, so we'll call the meeting in order. Any additions to the agenda? Right, carrying them, maybe wish to move the agendas presented.
No, sorry.
Thank you. Any discussion on Lyle's motion? Here you now, I'll call the question and answer.
Yeah, Jezza.
Okay. Does everybody have to tell me when everybody's? You know, is my.
It's, it's.
Okay, Carrie.
Yeah.
Mine's undefeated, but no, at that point.
Yeah, my, my, my computer's not working right, so. Okay, moving on to the minutes of August the ninth. Any errors, missions, questions arising from?
How from?
Okay, thank George Lee moves these. Any discussion on George Lee's motion? Hearing that, I'll call the question. And it's Carrie DeNast.
It's Carrie DeNast.
Okay.
Well, yes, Carrie DeNast.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, moving on to employees' recognitions. First one is for Mr. Shaw. For those that don't know, Grant started with the town five years ago, two thousand and sixteen, in March. He worked as the recreation facility operator. And then in two thousand and eighteen, moved into our tourism coordinating for a short term, and then back to public works. And has, this last year especially, proven to be a great asset in the pool and arena and the campgrounds, but especially with pool this year being such a new facility, new to Grant, new to Flash and Rob and the staff. But anyway, here's a recognition of your five years of participation in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take a home and use it for.
Yeah, it's been great working with and for the town with everyone, so, yes, really good.
Great. Well, the next one is Mr. Davidson. Started with the town fifteen years ago, again, as a recreation facility operator. Moved into the position of lead or public works operator on two thousand and nine, and then two thousand and fourteen, moved into lead hand. Has tried a couple other little things with the town over the years and it showed that, you know, great asset that you've been to us and our community, you know, operates on the, all the machinery, all the equipment we have, and has put in fifteen years with us. So thanks again, Rob, for all your dedicated work.
Thank you.
And again, too, you know, with Rob sat on the committee for the pool, design and build and and operate, and so, you know, you've been such an asset to our community with pool and arena and all our facilities.
Thank you.
Now, the next one, Janice Campbell Campbell. Janice has been with us for twenty-five years as chief financial officer and slash everything else. She's put up with five administrators, three mayors, I was one in the past and present, and eight councils. So she's put up with a lot of us. And, you know, prior to Janice starting for the town, she had worked in lots of different other areas, but she had worked at the hospital and put up with me as a trustee in the hospital for a period of time. So Janice and I go back a long ways of, on our political work for public or for the, for the public and through the town and through the possible board. But in addition to the financial, she also worked as office manager, HR manager, and IT manager. And unfortunately.
It's all computers.
My computer doesn't work, so. I don't need the one to you, but anyway, she's also acted as an interim CEO for a period of time when we were going through her transition in two thousand and fourteen. And we do have a certificate for her for twenty-five years. I was talking to Tracy out of Lowman, and she put in thirty-five. And she's just retiring now.
Oh, really?
So you still have ten more years to at least catch up to what Tracy endured.
Okay, but are you staying another ten years?
But see, my, my problem is is that I'm at the whim of the public, more so than you, Janice.
Yes, that's true.
You, you might put up, if you close that window, I see every so often, so that you don't have.
It's all the time now.
So you don't have to put up with the public, but anyway. No, it's been a great, you've been a great asset to our community and our organization. And I know that whenever you decide to retire in the next fifteen years, that, you know, you'll be more than well missed. Thank you, thank you very much. Again, yeah, thank you very much. All, all our employees have been long-term, and we really appreciate all that you guys offer our community. And on behalf of our community as a whole, like I said, sometimes you don't see a thank yous. Most of the time, that's the only time you know somebody ever says thank yous is when you die. You go to the funeral, so you don't hear many people stand up and say how bad you were. So we have to tell you now, so that when you're not with us, we can, but no, on behalf of the town, thank you very much for all the, for long-term.
Thanks so much, thank you, Carrie.
Okay, so that gets us through our employee services recognition. And we've been very, very fortunate to have had long-term employees in our community and, and, you know, it's much appreciated, but they contribute from what they do for us behind the scenes. And next, we have a Pam Davidson over in the corner here from Alberta. She's running as a Alberta senator candidate, so.
Yeah.
The floor is yours, you can either sit there and address us or stand, whichever you'd like.
Everybody can see you, Pam, is over a little bit more. Um, yeah, my name is Pam Davidson, I'm ready for one of the few spots that we have open for the senate in Alberta. Vulcan, I guess, and Lowman are a little bit more dear to my heart, because my parents were born and raised here. I've never lived here, but I was born in Fort McLeod, so not very far away. So coming, getting to come to your councils is an honor, and I, I very appreciate you inviting me. Yeah, I, I live on a farm in the Red Deer area. We have a hundred and thirty, forty acres and mostly hay. I have four kids. I've slowly gotten involved in politics in the last seven years. Once they were raised to a certain age, that was, enabled me to get out to the house. But, um, yeah, so I am running to represent rural Alberta and Alberta as a whole, but up until now, I think that most senators have really concentrated on the big cities. And I would like to make that change to be able to represent rural Alberta. I'm living in rural Alberta, I, I get it. I have my own broadband issues myself at our farm, even though we're only seven minutes from each Red Deer and Zildan Lake, we still don't get very good internet. So that's just one of my issues, but I'd like to hear what your issues are, and if you have anything, any questions for me, that would be, that would be awesome.
Okay, well, thank you very much for taking the time out to, you know, come out here. I'm not sure if we've ever had a senator that I know of ever come to our community. Especially one that's taken a plunge of running for senator and waiting.
Yeah.
Which unfortunately, we're not sure whether whoever gets in next Monday. What their philosophy will change, or whether it'll be the federal point or not. But I, being that we're all politicians and have participated in the election process, we, of course, wish you the best.
Yeah.
Is there any questions for Pam?
No question. I, I guess the challenge being the small rural, as opposed to the larger centers where all the votes are. I mean, I've, through my real estate, I've been in the smallest board in Alberta and the largest board in Alberta. The smallest board didn't realize what great opportunities we had, because when you're only among one around a table of, say, fourteen, you've got a lot of say. But when you're in the Calgary board, where you're one out of fifty-two hundred and some, your say is, is minimal.
Right.
How can you, this is the challenge is, how is it, coming from a small town, small amount of voters, can we, you know, get more of a say?
I'm voting for me. I mean, I, I'm going to be the first person in rural Alberta to run for the senate position. And I'm living, I grew up in the oil field with my dad, you know, I didn't actually do anything, but I, I get it. You know, I really understand what it means to work hard and, and be away from your family, but, you know, how, how important our industry is to us. And then I also have lived in the rural community, our rural community for fourteen years. So I've lived in the big cities too, my husband went to school, so had to be that to the big city. But it was always our focus to go back to rural community, because there's just so much to be, there's so much more advantage over here. You know, you get to live, I mean, your town is beautiful. I have had someone smile at me just sitting in my car waiting for a meeting on the main street, you know, people drive by, and that's the beauty of a small town. So I personally, myself, I understand that, and I believe in that, I believe in that community, I believe in our community. So, yeah.
Good luck.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Michelle's got one.
Not to ask it to an old question, but in a shortened version, what do you foresee your biggest challenge being running from rural Alberta for the senate, and do you have any kind of idea in terms of overcoming that?
Yeah, I think the biggest challenge is going to be to get up to vote. I think that a lot more people are, vote for them in the municipal elections in bigger cities. So I think that having people engaged in rural Alberta to get out and vote and see the components of that will be very important. And how I will do that, I've gone around to, this is probably my fifteenth municipal meeting all over Alberta, and for the next three weeks, I think I have three to seven a week. Yeah, I'm heading up to Grand Prairie on Friday, I've been to Locree, been down to Tewa, going back to Tewa tomorrow, been to Little Town, thirty-six kilometers north of the southern border. So, you know, just getting my name out there, representing and, and explaining what it is that I'm doing, I think is the most important thing. I think we'll do advertising and I think we'll do mail, it's just, it's, I think that's going to be my biggest challenge, though.
Laura.
Oh, I know as a senator, you're supposed to be apolitical, but do you come from a specific political persuasion?
Yeah, I actually am representing the Conservative Party of Canada. I won one of the three nominations that they, because they ran their own race in their party. So I applied for that job first, and now I am an official candidate for them.
Okay, so any other questions for Pam?
One of the challenges I have, though, is getting five hundred signatures for my nomination. I wondered if it's appropriate if I could ask if you, with no pressure, if you use my timing?
Sure, some additions to this.
Is that all right?
Sure.
I actually forgot my ten mil, so if you add it in, that would be awesome. And you can be part if you want.
So you have, have to get five hundred signatures?
Yes.
And is there a, amount of cash that you have to put up, or?
Yes, I have to put up four thousand dollars.
Okay.
I have to put up ten thousand for the party.
Oh, okay.
Which I get most of that back once this is all done. Five thousand was just a behavior, so I'm, so I'm giving myself.
So if you don't get elected, do you get the ten back also?
Yeah, 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 because at first, I was supposed to go to running the nomination race for the party, and because we didn't need to run, only three people applied, so three people were clean. So we got that back right away, so the other five thousand will get back this is the election all over. Yeah.
So did you say that three posi, two people running for two positions is what?
There's actually six in over, though.
Oh, six in over, okay.
Three for the Conservative Party of Canada, and then three independents.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I think I can kind of semi-speak for the majority of our, our consistency anyway, is that I think a lot of people were very disappointed that, you know, our minister appointed a person to sit as a and not wait for the election to be held. I think there was a lot of people that were disappointed that that process went through. And although, I mean, I'm not saying that in the past that we've been very successful, I mean, quite a few of our senators have waited, waited, waiting for lots of years before they were ever appointed. But I think the process is kind of disappointing that we weren't successful in.
Yeah, I was disappointed that Harper didn't change it when he was in power, but it's literally changed the constitution, so.
Yeah.
It's just not as easy as we were all lucky to be.
Well, and I think that's part of the problem with most people that get involved, I mean, and I'm sure you'll probably see it too, is that, you know, things that you think you can change, you can't. Things that you, you know, potentially make a difference in is, is greater than what you think either. I think sometimes it's, it's disappointing that it's so hard to, to make change.
Yeah.
And it's no different than us as councillors, we, you know, come in anticipating that, that, you know, we can move that hill and then find out after the hill's a lot bigger than we thought, or.
Yeah, we were kind of, I was kind of fortunate, I mean, we were this, super disappointed as a team that he appointed somebody, you know, especially because we were so close to, to the election. And I think that, that says a lot to people that are actually putting their names forward, because we are still in the race, even though he appointed somebody, and we, you know. But we went from two spots down to one, and then Doug Black is one of our sitting senators right now, and he is retiring early.
Right.
In hopes to, in hopes that the Conservative Party will do well. And, and they've already promised to respect whoever the first two choices are. So, and it doesn't matter, if it doesn't end up being, they're, they're too conservative, two out of the three, then they will respect whoever the two people are, so that's a positive.
So your family comes from Lowman area?
Yeah, my mom grew up in Lowman, and my dad grew up here, I think, is the way it went. Yeah. And then my sister-in-law actually just lives out of town right now.
Yeah, you get the Lowman plug in there for where you live.
Yeah, yeah, but you're not old enough to know probably my parents, so.
So what, where?
Uh, my dad's last name is Mundel, and my mom's last name, so she was adopted by my grandpa, so I think Paul Dorff would have been the name back then. I mean, my parents are in their seventies, so I also.
I'd have to talk to my dad.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a bit amazing, I'm very busy.
Yeah, probably would.
We grew up.
I think my dad was a little bit bad.
Then he would know my dad.
They'd be friends, probably.
That's, that's funny.
Yeah. But what a beautiful town you guys have. I even have been able to get lost in your little town, so.
Well, thank you.
Something for me, I could find myself in knowing directions, I kept pointing my, you're like, I don't see it, I can't find it anywhere.
It doesn't help, he's not oriented, nor so.
Yeah, we're perfect.
Skewed.
Right. I was, well, I was at the big county building, and I'm like, do they have more than one building inside? And then, but I have a very smart team, and they helped direct me. Usually I'm pretty good, I live in the country, and I'm training my personal assistant to northwest, southeast, not right-left. Right, and then here I am, so where are I?
We tried to tell everybody to just come underneath the water tower and.
Oh, yeah, there you go, that would have been a good thing. But super friendly little town, super cute. Awesome, you guys, I appreciate it. If you end up having any more questions for me, feel free to email me, if anybody asks one part.
I'll take a part.
Yeah. There you go, awesome. Well, I have another meeting I have to run, you there holding it for me? So it was nice, it was fun meeting you all.
Yeah, well, thank you very much for coming, and good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Great, thank you. Okay, now, moving on to dump all of number four, moving on to correspondence. Letter from Minister Madu. And it's just response to the letter that we sent, so. Any questions on that model?
I'm, I'm just curious about the, it says that they gave the report on April thirtieth. But we.
Haven't seen it.
Haven't seen anything.
Jason Snyder at the Mayors and Reeves kind of sent me answer to that question. He said that it's because it was, had to go to cabinet first, and because cabinet's not sitting, that's where it's, sitting is on somebody's desk waiting for cabinet signature or approval. But they are still using some of the information that was in that document, but nobody has seen the document in its fullest. Some people have seen chunks of, according to Jason, so. And he sits on that committee, but from the RMA, and Tanya sits on it from the AUA, so. Neither, neither organization has seen the full document, they've heard about it, but not seen it. So hopefully, we will see it before they make a, a decision in what direction they're going to go. But I think that most municipalities, even though Mr. Madu or Minister Madu has said that, you know, they've heard from the public, but obviously, they too, they have heard from the municipalities too that have concerns. And they're the ones that pay the bill. I mean, in, in essence, the great payers paid it, but most of them don't really see it. Whereas us as municipalities see the funding allocation from our budgets. Any other questions on that one? I just hope I answered it correctly there, but. Okay, moving on to number two, which is the letter from our honorable minister, or Prime Minister, Premier of the Problems, pardon, Sir, Premier of the Problems, so. Congratulating us on the job well done for participation in the better communities. Any question on that one? Okay, moving on to the next one is from Raor. Virtually the same thing, other than they were able to contribute some funds towards it, and so that's where the fifteen hundred dollars came, fifteen thousand dollars came up. Okay, moving on to the next one was from Minister MacGowan. And this one here is to give us a few dollars to support us in the election coming up.
Well, it's good that they addressed the fact that we may not have an election, it might be an acclamation, and we still would receive if we had to do for the trustees and for the senate.
Yeah, and, and we'll still be doing it theoretically for the, like you said, the school trustees. Depending on, again, if there's candidates to.
That's true.
Or, you know, not a full slate of candidates, I should say, here and there. Yeah, so, you're right, that's great to see, isn't it? Any other questions on that one, or comments? Okay, moving on to the next one is the thank you note from Kiera. I also had an opportunity to meet Kiera's uncle and her grandpa. And both of them were thoroughly impressive, as the community as a whole that got behind her, you know, the organizations, the businesses, the, the service clubs that got behind her and, and supported her and her, her family, and try and to go forward, so, you know, they were very impressed. One was from Okatoks, and one was from High River, and they were just thoroughly impressed with the community, but the support they got from all the groups that participated. So that was nice, Kiera, thank you for that. And then, any questions on that one, or comments?
I think she's a great ambassador for the town, she's such a nice, a nice kid, I mean, she's, but she was very accommodating to people, and I think it was great, and she had a proud tip and still sat on the podium.
And I think you're right, I think she's not only a great ambassador for our community, but great ambassador for the sport and for the, for the Olympics as a whole, especially in a year when, you know, everybody's just COVID-ridden. She, she was still prepared to participate, so you're right, a great ambassador, so, you know. Okay, anything else? Thanks all, and moving on to our CNP letters of concern, so there's two more there.
And I did mix these ones together, one is about retro pay, and the other one is about the, the funding model itself, so. And support for our CNP, but because you've been seeing these repetitively through the meetings, I've been putting them together as as the, our CNP letters of concern.
Okay, okay. Any question on either one of those two? Okay, moving on to the Shinnecarsh Board Report. That library down at Watertown, I think that would be kind of neat, it'd be interesting to see how, how it works, because, I mean, they're an unfortunate community that, you know, gets huge numbers in the summertime, but. Yeah, quite, quite small in the winter or off-season, and I think that if this is very successful, you'll probably see some of those other communities that, you know, don't have enough numbers to keep a library open, you know, that were able to do something like this. So I think this should be a, kind of a hats off for the Shinnecarsh, that they were willing to try something like this, and. Okay, any thoughts or questions? Okay, if not, somebody wish to move the correspondence, Paul, for information? Thank you. Any discussion on Paul's motion? Here you now, I'll call a question. Okay, great, thank you, it's Carrie DeNast for you. Okay, moving on to the bylaws and policies, so land use by law amendment number fifteen hundred twenty-one.
Mr. Chair, I should excuse myself from the first one due to the cumulative interest.
Potential, can you?
Potential.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so while excuses himself at seven twenty-eight. Okay, to the rest of you. Any questions on this?
So this one's very straightforward, the report goes through, this is a piece of property that was actually built as a multifamily unit. And for some reason, as the bylaw, our land use by law has been adopted and adapted, it stayed as R1, and the zoning for it is obviously multifamily dwelling, so this is just a rezoning to. The reason why it's never come up before is this is the first time the property's changed hands, so.
So it was one of the only pieces of property that theoretically was a true
multifamily.
Multifamily originally applied for as the whole work, so.
It, it was built with three different entrances, three different mirrors, all, all of that stuff, so it was, it was built this way. So when it came back and they were getting ready for the sale, and it came back as R1, we looked at it, our land use by law, and went to do compliance, and it wasn't compliant because it was an R4. So we had talked into Ors, they said it's a simple rezoning. Take it, now, there is that process, but it, council could keep doing this, the purchase of the property has gone through, so this is just cleaning up the land use by law to allow for it to be that.
Has it been used as?
Multifamily since it was built.
Since it was built.
I just, every thought there was only one.
In fact, I live in the basement, and one, one speaks.
Okay, okay.
So with this, it does have to be advertised, it has. So with this, it does have to be advertised, it has, does have to do a public hearing because it's a land use bylaw amendment. So the public hearing and that will be the, at the meeting in October. But you can do the first reading this evening to get that process started so we can advertise and move forward.
Paul Luke's first reading, thank you Paul. Any discussion on Paul's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question.
Lyles won't come up, right?
No. So it's Carrie Nannassey.
Yep, Carrie Nannassey, okay, thank you. Oh, thanks Paul.
Seven thirty?
Uh, yes. Okay, moving on to six-two, which is Regional Emergency Management Bylaw Number Fifteen Oh One Twenty-One.
Well, this is a new bylaw, as you all remember, in the end of two thousand and nineteen, we passed a bylaw for the emergency management. It went to Minister for their approval after we had all done all three readings and they actually asked for more amendments. So it's all the way back to us. All the amendments have been placed into this document. It's been reviewed by the Emergency Management Agency again. And we all are going through this process again for the three readings so that we can send it back to the Minister for approval. This, yeah, it's exactly the same process as we did last time. You've all had a chance to read the report, to see what the amendment changes were and really it's, yeah, dotting i's and crossing t's to make sure that we're, you know, giving the authority to the right people at the right times and still allowing council to have that final say on the decisions.
I want to, I want to.
First reading? You can do all three readings this evening if you would like.
Okay. So you want us to move first? Any question or discussion on Laura's motion? Are we gonna, not individually, but two though, or do you want to do all three as together?
Which?
I don't know what.
You, you, you're just doing the bylaw itself, because this is a brand new bylaw. So you can do first, second, intro.
Right, but are we gonna do individually then? Is, is that what you've got? Okay.
Oh, yeah, oh yeah, yeah. Yes, sorry.
So Laura's move first, any discussion on Laura's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question.
Carrie Nannassey.
Okay, it's Carrie Nannassey, second reading. George Lee, thank you. Any discussion on George Lee's motion, second motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question.
Carrie Nannassey.
Okay, it's Carrie Nannassey, introduction of third, Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question.
Carrie Nannassey.
Okay, Carrie Nannassey, now third reading. So. Any discussion on Laura's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question.
Carrie Nannassey.
Okay, Carrie Nannassey, so moving on with that to send it, get it signed and sent in, so, thank you very much. Moving on to policy P eight zero nine, named holiday proposed amendments.
It's our existing union contract and personnel policy identified the holidays that council gave. It had a provision in there in case anything was declared by the Town of Vulcan, the Province of Alberta, or the Dominion of Canada. As you're all aware, the, the National Day of Reconciliation has been declared by the federal government. It has not been declared provincially, but you did have that deemed there for your policy. So rather than bringing it up for discussions on just an individual day because the federal government has proclaimed it and it's received royal assent, you can just change your policy to adopt it if you so wish. And by doing that, it also, by putting it in the policy, it also affects the other policies with like the office closures, those sort of things. In the contract for if you do want staff to work on those days, in the, with the contracts that we have in place with the union, it is a full days paid plus double time for any time staff. So you're paying three times the wages for any of them to work on a staff holiday declared by the federal governments. It is far more economical by device to give them the option.
And this one is a fixed date?
This is a fixed, fixed day of September thirtieth. So put together and you can see the, the days that are already in this policy. You've done it for Boxing Day, it's not a, a standard holiday in every province, those sort of things. So this declares so that you can put it that way and it's a simple policy change. So if something changes, you can simply go with your motion.
Okay, hold on a minute. Oh, okay, thank you Laura. Okay, any discussion on Laura's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question.
Just, I don't know, arguments, like, pardon my ignorance, why did they pick September thirtieth?
Not sure the day, they, originally, the conversations were about September twentieth and then it was moved to September thirtieth. And I didn't, I didn't find enough research on why they picked that particular day.
Because it, it just seems like with Thanksgiving, like we could have like almost back to back. So I, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Yeah, and again too, I mean, there was, there was been quite a bit of discussion too, because there was like that pink or orange t-shirt day. They thought maybe it might be around that day, but again, the federal government picked the day and unless somebody else knows, I honestly haven't heard any more than that.
Based on most of the news reports of that, there was conflicting, like, there was, there was a, a lot of suggestions, but that was the day that was picked and there's, it's no real tie to any, it's, you know, particular, yeah, the, the day was.
I'm not sure.
The, the remembering the day was more important, but the date they picked is the way they made that.
Yeah, and Paul just talked about the indigenous day, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, it's early in the year, it's in June, is it not?
Yeah, so I thought too, and I think that's where that orange t-shirt day.
The union contract is about this actually before it went for royal assent.
June twenty-first is the indigenous day.
Which was the old Farmer's Day, wasn't it? In New Robbins, I think. We used to have a Farmer's Day at school, but you got to have off and you had to.
Before my time.
That's true.
No, I honestly don't remember. They might have called it something else, so.
They called it Farmer's Day where I live.
Well, I was gonna say, we, maybe it might have gone off.
Are you sure it was Farmer's Day or did they just make it stay at home and work? Because there were lots of Farmer's Days.
Anyway, so Laura has moved this amendment to our policy. Any further discussion or comment? Hearing none, we'll call the question.
Carrie Nannassey.
Okay, thank you, Carrie Nannassey. Okay, moving on to current business, community sports courts.
So everybody's had a chance to read the, read the report that was put together. Through, word of mouth, through people that are involved in the Recreation Committee knew a little bit about this. This got started because of, obviously, a gentleman wanted to make a donation towards these courts in our community, he's done this in other communities. And so Bonnie brought this board, basically to try to start this process a little bit smoother than how we started with the pool where all of a sudden the model was rolling, trying to build these things before we even had an idea of what they cost, that sort of thing. So what they did is they put this out to the public to even see through a survey in an open house, just to see if there was a whole bunch of interest from people in town, which from the seniors side, we did know that there was interest in pickleball courts, those sort of things. So took that and had an open house with twenty-two people attending, kind of throughout some locations that Bonnie worked on with public workers and, and the different groups to see for some feedback. And basically wanted to bring it to council, if this is something that you would like to pursue and if you do, possibly at the location that was suggested being Memorial Park. And really what's, she's asking here is for you guys' approval to put together a plan and a budget to do this and then bring it back to see if we can, if it's a project. Because this is not something that you capital planned for or, or has been part of your strategic plan. This was something that's been made semi-feasible through a donation and with a timeline attached to it to twenty twenty-four, so.
Is this Mister Bickle, is he from around here?
His mom and dad live here.
I've got some questions about the pictures.
Is it the sizing?
Well, no, it's, well, no, the, the orange, the blue, the light blue, the dark, the red dots.
Oh, okay.
What are all of those meaning? Because there's no, nothing that says what they mean.
So I believe that the, what's being proposed here and for the purposes of this was two different courts, so one's the tennis and the other, and then the other is pickleball and basketball. So the blue is a different court. And then I believe that the small blue is possibly a bathroom.
If that's the case, not that it would affect the preferred choice.
The other ones have bathrooms in, in a couple locations, obviously the pool.
Well, the pool does, but yet they still put the orange in there, so that was the bathroom.
Well, I think it's the light blue, little square is the bathroom. I think they just basically plunk, plunk the same sketch in on a different, just to see the layouts, the amount of space required at each location. I, unfortunately was away and I wasn't able to attend that.
I didn't even know that they also had, so I wasn't here.
Well, it's unfortunate, I just, I know that they had this planned previously, but I ended up only on the same night as the first, there's an action group meeting for the AHS.
Oh, right, okay.
It was there, it was, there was quite a few people there actually.
That's good, it's nice to see you.
It was, I thought it was all attended.
And so George Lee, you could probably provide more feedback. Is that correct, but that's the washrooms?
Yes.
Basketball and then the others are the bigger tennis and?
Yes, and I believe won't be outdoor skating rink, the tennis?
On one of them as well, on one of them as well.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Now, the, the theory is if it's going to be tennis, it's going to be a hard court, correct?
Yes.
So that they obviously realize that when you put water on a hard court, it doesn't deteriorates the quality of the court.
The integrity of it.
Integrity of it substantially, so.
I think pickleball is just our asphalt this year.
But that's what I mean, you put, you put water on top of asphalt, your asphalt deteriorates by fifty, sixty percent. It's like agility, by, by making it into a, a hockey rink or a rink, I should say, not hockey.
And so this, this.
I know people who drink with a big thing, everybody really like that.
Yeah, until they, who shovels it, who fills it with water? In this country, like, I mean, Milo Lowman, or Milo Erwood Champion, that's why Champion went with cement, but I think Champion, I think got maybe two weeks of use this year as a water rink, because Mother Nature, Mother Nature wasn't very kind.
And so that was part of the conversation is, is I believe that if possible, they could do that, accommodate the space, but has led to more of a conversation of if council wants to move forward with this, then we would actually engage the, our, our engineers to, to help us with the, the design of this too. It'll, it'll be, for lack of a better term, it'll be like the pool, like when we first started, everybody wanted everything and then we started being able to answer those questions. If the, if the surface is concrete, then yes, a skating rink is, is a possibility. If it's asphalt or something different, then, or a rubber base, then it's probably not feasible. So we need to get those answers first before we get it.
Yeah, and, and I guess too, by, by potentially approving this request too, then they'll come back with some cost factors, you know, how much are we going to spend on engineering, architectural design, how much may anticipate in pictures, it could be five hundred thousand or it could be a million, you know.
We really don't want to go the same route where we did with the court, where we paid somebody for designs and the designs that we had weren't feasible when we actually got into the actual building of them. So we don't want to go that route. What we want to do is make sure council's on board with, with going ahead with this because there isn't anything in our strategic planning about this project. If you're good with going ahead with it, we'll bring you back the designs and hopefully be able to answer those questions and, and have accurate costs before we get started rather than halfway through the process.
So people understand that this is just investigation, not a for sure thing, we're going to do it at any expense?
Yeah, so that's why we drafted a resolution for you, if you, if you would like with the recommendation. And the recommendation being that, that council supports the proposed development of a multi-use sports court located at Memorial Park. And it's really more about picking that location and directs administration to prepare a detailed development plan and capital budget out of the estimate to be presented at a future regular meeting of council for consideration.
Tell the chems ready to go, tell them to take the motion.
It's always better when you read it after I do.
That's right. I think that that would be the only prudent, prudent that you, but that's okay.
Yeah, council supports proposed development.
Where it's located.
And Memorial Park is, is, every, every person, all of the twenty-two people that were at the open house, were in support of Memorial Park.
Only twenty-two?
I believe, yeah, that's what she put in the report, it was twenty-two. And again, I apologize, I was out of.
But one time when I thought you were counting, I counted twenty-five.
Oh, okay.
At one point.
She may not have counted staff and, and or.
No, I was hiding.
Okay.
Oh, that's good.
So parking won't be an issue there?
As much as other places, but.
Well, I know the pool, but it'll be really a nightmare if we had to park there.
Memorial has parallel parking on all, on three of the four sides.
Yes, right.
All the way around. So there's only one small area with fire hydrant that cuts off a little bit and then a little bit by two entrances.
And theoretically, you know, pending on, and that may be something that should be contemplated even in their proposal, is that if parking needs to be expanded, where the parking would be proposed to be, you know, Memorial.
Dip in or something.
You could put a dip in there and put in.
Take the bulldozer up to the sidewalk and put any parking on that.
Theoretically, I mean, that might be something that this group could look into to say that, you know, we're anticipating the numbers of people that use it to increase. When the tennis courts were there, the parking is the way it is right now too, so. And when the old swimming pool was there, the parking never, but when, but yet when we proposed the swimming pool to be there, we anticipated increasing the park parking. So you're right, right Laura, that might be something. So you're right, right, Lauren, that might be something.
Well, I think nowadays people drive more there than, than they would maybe when it really was a swimming pool.
Yeah.
You dissent, your kids.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor from Lyle, any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question.
Carrie Nance.
Good, thank you, it's Carrie Nance. We'll move on to the next one, which is the Vulcan County Performing Arts Society.
So if you've all had a chance to read your reports, pretty straightforward. They want to do an event on, uh, uh, First Avenue, uh, in coordination with the opening of the Nine Line Brewery. And, uh, they're asking for a temporary street closure on Saturday, the twenty-fourth, from, uh, for some reason, uh, three to ten, three to ten thirty?
Can't be Saturday, must be Friday.
But maybe they, yeah, they may have to be closed by Ken.
Yes, yeah, and, and the street closure till ten thirty so that they could actually clean up afterwards, yeah.
So that's on the Friday?
On the Friday, yes.
Just a question with, uh, uh, starting at three o'clock. Is that going to have an effect on, uh, grain trucks going through? I know it's later in the day, but I mean, if they're still going down to the Pioneer and the UFA fertilizer, blocking them out, how are they going to get to?
It's, we'll still be able, we'll make sure that we can direct around if we have to. I do know that they've reached out to the adjacent, uh, business owners and, uh, there was no concerns.
Of the moment, yes, the district council.
Okay, thank you, George Lee. Any discussion on George Lee's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question.
Carrie Nance.
Okay, that's Carrie Nance, thank you very much. Moving on to the arena rental fees.
So to provide council with a little bit, bit of background on this, uh, one of the things that we've done, uh, the rates at the arena haven't, uh, haven't been impacted for, uh, several years. And knowing that the new council's coming in, one of the first things we always review is, uh, is generating more revenue and, uh, worrying expenses. We're anticipating that because the fees at the, uh, arena haven't changed since two thousand and sixteen, that that's one area that we will have, um, uh, an opportunity to, uh, generate some revenue. And so what we wanted to do is to be proactive with the user groups. We've gone ahead and given a heads up that's something that would possibly be looked at in this fall. And I know that came through direction from the recreation committee as well, through, uh, conversations with them. So we reached out to the organizations to let them know and of course it, it, uh, got them a little worried about, uh, where they were for the upcoming season. If these fees and rates were, were to change on January first, which is what's implemented in our rates and fees by law. So I encourage them to, uh, send a letter to council to, uh, uh, recommend that, uh, any changes to the rates and fees by law correspond to their seasons. And they did a good job of explaining why they can do that. And it becomes a simple, uh, recommendation that, uh, uh, that you tie the rate increases to the season and really that's changing one line in the rates and fees by law to, instead of saying twenty twenty-one, it will say the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two season and, and so on. So the actual rates themselves won't change until September of the year that, uh, that they're implemented.
Questions on, on Lyle's motion to alter law?
So will this, I mean, it'll obviously for, for ice rental, but like, uh, is there any others in our feed?
Carrie Nance.
It's Carrie Nance, okay, thank you. Moving on to seven four, which is member-at-large for the, our, M- MPC.
Brian Cole moved out of town, he submitted his resignation for both. Uh, because of the time we have the, uh, months between council meetings, because we received this, we started the advertising process for, uh, these positions. Hopefully we'll be able to, uh, bring back a formal recommendation. I know the MPC has one member that's put their name forward, which will come to meeting tomorrow. And the fire committee is, uh, in, in the process of, of getting some resignations of the member-at-large on these two committees and, uh, providing formal direction to, uh, for me to bring back, uh, proposed.
Plus we should, uh, send a letter to Brian thanking him for his participation in both these two groups and, and, um, someone wishes to move that we do this, that would be agreeable to, uh, thank you, Larry.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question.
Carrie Nance.
Okay, it's Carrie Nance, we'll move on to the next item, which is the CEO evaluation. And some of us had the opportunity to, uh, discuss why we're getting it so soon, but, you know, um, it needs to be done before December thirty-first. And the discussion was, is that council felt that they would like this council to do it instead of asking another new council who will only have two months or a month underneath the ballot request. And, uh, so I guess what we need is a motion to proceed with, uh, CEO evaluation. Paul? Thank you. Any discussion on Paul's motion, any questions or concerns? Um, we asked, there was a question earlier, if we could have it in before the next council meeting so that we have time to do it up and so we can do it for the first meeting in October, the evaluations. It was my fault last time it took so long to get it all tabbed related, but I will be more diligent in, in giving it down there. So you can get it into Karen and so she can add it, um, and, so you can do that, that'd be great.
Carrie Nance.
Okay, thank you, so it's Carrie Nance. So we'll move on to the community reports that, uh, have been submitted. So there's one there from the waist. It'll be for the twenty-eighth. Okay, any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to Mayor's Reeves from the June the fourth. Okay, no questions or moving on to the SEWA executive committee. And then the next one is the SEWA board meeting. Okay, hearing none of those, we'll move on to the cup course. Okay, hearing none on any of those, somebody wish to file the community reports, Verna? Any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question.
Carrie Nance.
Okay, thank you, it's Carrie Nance. So we'll move on to verbal ones from Councilor Taylor.
Call being dropped. MPC will be voted on. Like the ambulance being the other night. And breathe. That takes her a while.
Okay, any questions for Paul? Okay, thank you, Councilor Holt.
Um, I was at Fit My Services. Um, it was a very short meeting, there wasn't hardly anybody there. We just did an update on our financials and we kind of took a look at the budget. It has to be passed in October. So there was no draft minutes because our secretary was, was working in the end. And I went to the MPC for Lyle and, uh, we already read the rezoning thing that we did on that building. Our residential, or went to the multi-unit residential of four. Uh, I went to the parade in Picture View with, um, a couple of others. And I was at the rep committee and we pretty much covered everything that we talked about there, like the fees for the arena, the sports field, um, and all that. So everything is in bodies with hurt, basically, what we did at the rep meeting. And I attended this sports field meeting the other night at the, um, town hall. And like I said, I thought it was very well attended and that there, it seemed to be a lot of, um, seniors at it, but there was three young boys that came in, all of, they were all twelve years old. These young boys, they came in, they filled out the, uh, the sheet for the, what you would like to see added and everything. And they went around, put their stars on everything that they liked and, and that, that's what I said. It's good to see young kids like that coming out for it, so, and that's basically all I have.
Okay, any questions for George Lee? Thank you, Councilor Agers.
On, uh, September second, we had our first meeting. It was supposed to be getting together kind of a beefline a bunch, we couldn't do that for a June meeting, but because of COVID, we ended up doing, uh, online meeting instead. Uh, we did go, uh, through some new bylaws that were being sent off to municipal affairs. On January second, twenty twenty-two, there'll be an orientation for, uh, municipalities. Uh, no subdivisions are up over the past year, which is good, much earlier before there was basically nothing. Uh, there was talk whether September thirtieth would be a stat holiday. They were asking other municipalities of what was going on with that, but that's what's going on now. Uh, and I also went to the Citizen, Citizen Action Coalition regarding the ambulance service. First meeting was August thirty-first at the Legion. Had a, pretty much a full house there. It's something I'd never really paid attention to before, because I thought, well, Vulcan's got an ambulance, so we're, we're good. It's, the stats say that, uh, in the first thirty-six seconds, it's the average time for a nine-one-one to call an ambulance being dispatched. Well, it just so happened that, uh, the Vulcan ambulance was going to Calgary that day because someone had a sore leg. I mean, we hear about how the larger centers in Calgary and Edmonton, how scary it is when they have a red alert because they don't have any ambulances available. Vulcan's just about like that all the time because they're going out transfers in different areas. They actually had a call to go up to, I think it was Catmore. It's, it's amazing how far our ambulance will, will go. And it's, it's very concerning, so we had a Citizen Action Coalition meeting on September eighth for a local group, trying to get together to see what we can do to take this to the government. Basically what's come out of it, we're going to get together with Strathwaite and other communities to try and put our heads together to see what, what can be done because a lot of the times the ambulances or the trucks, they say, are waiting with patients at the hospitals when they should be out on the street. That's what happens in the, in the cities and in the smaller towns, everyone's trying to cover one another. Uh, I think the idea was, was great when the original thought that everyone would get the opportunity to have health service, no matter where you are in the province. But it's gotten to a point that no matter where you are in the province, you're, when they're calling out an ambulance, it could be, you could be waiting forty, forty-five minutes for ambulance. Luckily, we have with our fire, the local fire department, they've got some training. They can do some training onsite, but they don't have the equipment like they do with an ambulance or the training. So it'll be interesting how their ambulance service, they're doing more calls out of town than they are in town. There's a problem there and it's something that's, uh, is going to need to be addressed or it's putting people's lives at risk.
Was there lots of people at that first meeting?
At the first meeting, the Legion, yeah, the.
No, no, not that night, the, the night of the, of the group, the first night the group.
There was about ten people there.
Oh, well, that's.
Because there was eighteen that signed up.
Yeah, yeah, it was ten, but there is, like I say, there was some people complaining, well, they picked at the same night as the, the outdoor court thing, but the outdoor court thing was booked before that. So I guess people chose their preference. But I think the thing is, we need to get this out into the public so people realize that, I mean, Vulcan's great because of their hospital, we do have an ambulance, but a lot of the, well, the majority of the time, our ambulance isn't available to us. So there's, uh, getting rid out there to the public that's being posted on Life in Vulcan and, uh, there's other sites where it shows where Vulcan's in that, you know, red alert where our ambulance is gone. Or else the paramedics and I are just so burnt out, uh, they've got no one to, like our ambulance might be sitting.
So that's going to be the, a big increase in this? Because I know on the stats that we get each month, we see how many times, um, the EMS isn't available for medical, and you have to bring in the fire. Uh, is, has numbers gone up a lot that there's a big in, in, interest in this now, do you know?
We don't have all of that, the stats, and that right now. I know I brought this up at the meeting that, you know, we do get reports, uh, from the fire, fire chief on that. And I'm, just on a side note on that too, if someone needs to be transported to the hospital, they have to wait for the ambulance unless it's a, the fire chief said there, if it's an emergency and they really need to get someone to the ambulance, they will take them in the truck, take them in, but they're not supposed to. But as far as stats, it's numbers that we're trying to get together. That's all we have right now.
Okay, thanks, Lyle, any questions for Lyle or anything else? Okay, thanks, Lyle, Councilor Pauls.
Robbie?
Robbie. Oh, I'm sorry.
Laura's, Laura's not here.
Thanks.
I apologize, I was just going around my.
We didn't amend the agenda.
Well, I apologize, sorry, sorry.
I have to reiterate, like, what Lyle said, unfortunately, the second meeting, um, was a little bit too short of notice for us to be able to make it, but, um, it's kind of alarming in terms of the amount, well, it's not really interesting, the amount of healthcare providers and workers from our community that were there and everything they had to say from their perspective, because it was very much, it was very misleading things about what, a much larger concern that it is just from, like, the monthly reporting and what the reality of actually those scenarios are now concerning, they can be for any community, let alone one of those quite heavy, um, senior concentration, not to mention like, you know, young families. And it's concerning everyone, but especially with our demographics. So it's, hopefully, getting together with other communities will be able to figure out a solution. But yeah, it was definitely. But yeah, it was definitely probably I agree. Otherwise, coming up this week is the, it's supposed to be the AGM and regarding community features and term ballot, but I don't, that'll be moved back to virtual, dealing with new procedures and stuff.
Okay, so let me show all of you, any questions for Michelle? Okay, here you go, move on to Councilor Armstrong.
Well, George Lee reminded me about the parade and picture view, it was actually quite a, they have a lot of people out there. Maybe they almost do, I hope. But anyhow, the only meeting I had was the Marcus Foundation and you just get the new guidelines and then the next day you get the new guidelines and then the next day you get the new guidelines, so I think they have the work pedal for them trying to keep ahead of what, what they're required to do and they've done an excellent job, so that's, that's really good. That's my only.
Okay, any questions for Maura? No, thank you very much, now me. We had a waste committee report, meeting again too and out of it, there's new, some new bylaws or bringing bylaws up to, to standard. And they started on part of the budget, so the budget was semi-looked at to move forward with. I too was at a parade in Kachut, like Laura said, it was, it's a long parade. Glad I didn't have to walk it because it was a long parade and lots of people.
Very quiet.
Yeah.
A very quiet parade.
But.
Because we didn't have.
We didn't have, our music didn't work either, so that's why ours was so quiet too, but anyway. So anyway, it was good though, it was nice to be invited and then I went to the ambulance one here in Vulcan and there was 72 and 18 signed up and had quite a good discussion with Don before and after and then I went over to Nanton, their numbers were substantially less. Again, we're not, they're not sure why, but there was a total of 18 there, listened to his discussions that he had and then went to Clarisone's and there was six. Again, they think it's partly because, you know, how to get the word out in such a short period of time, but there is a, quite a, a discussion, this isn't new. You know, like so many people think, oh, this happened last year, it's been going on since the day that AHS took it over. It's been digressing day after day after day or year after year after year and every year we bring it back up and beat them up. And it's not just the EMS, it's the, it's the inter-hostile transfer system issues and it's the other issues that are in the system of education, equipment, AHS taking over 100% of the dispatch and the the quality of that, but they've had 14 years to bring it from one of the first-class ambulance services in North America to put it into the toilet and be one of the worst in the problem, in the, in the country. And anyway, Don had an analogy in, in Clarisone, I said, I wish you would have shown it or was talking about it. And he said, this, this is like a, a baseball team. And on a baseball team, you have a pitcher and catcher and first, second, third, shortstop, outfield, the three outfield. And each group participating in, yet you're a team and he put different categories on each one. So anyway, I went home and woke up at 2 o'clock in the morning thinking that if this was a baseball team and we were the owners, what would we do? We would fire our manager, our assistant manager, our coaches and we would start off with getting some new, or we'd go to our manager, assistant manager and say, you know, we haven't been in the playoffs, we haven't even been to a a game where we got past first base, what can you do to correct it? My opinion is that we as politicians and provinces as politicians only have two choices. One is we give policy direction and, you know, how this should be moving forward, or we affect budgets. In my opinion, and I don't think the provincial government has enough stamina to do it because they'd be crucified by the unions, but is to give AHS, go to Alberta Health, who is where they give their direction to, to give direction to AHS that they have 90 days to correct this problem, 30 days to come up with a solution, 30 days to implement it, this solution, and 30 days to show how it's improved. And if not, AHS gets the budget cut 100%, not a cent. Any departments in the province of Alberta will get a cent from AHS, from Alberta Health or from the Treasury. It's a very rash, strong solution, but it was one that I have and because I don't think Alberta Health is giving AHS the proper direction and I don't think AHS really give a care about what goes on in our municipalities. They are island unto themselves and that's strictly my opinion, not yours. And I would not voice it as an opinion of Town of Vulcan, I'm voicing this as an opinion of Town Grant. And so I have seen it digress since they took it over and not one year has it gone uphill on any of the site, any of the areas. Every area has gotten downhill. And so I think it's to the point where there are people that need to lose their jobs. Do I think that that's fair and right? No, but they've had 14 years to, to do something. They took over a system that we had a full-time ambulance crew and a secondary ambulance crew. And on weekends, we had two ambulance crews on call on every long weekend. The last three years that the system was run by our local municipalities. Now, like Lyle says, there are days when there is not an ambulance in the facility and if there is one in the facility, it's not being staffed some days. And I don't think that we should put up with it. So I think that we as council need to support this group and see if it can gain some legs and maybe even go farther to, to start a letter signing or create some letters. I think that the, Joseph, our MLA, made some comments saying, tell us what we can do to improve the system. You know, just don't send me a letter saying it needs to be improved, how can we improve it? So there is one suggestion on how we could have moved this ball forward. And again, we don't, it seems though the, the, the rate pairs of most municipalities or rate pairs of the province of Alberta or any province, what do they do? They fire the politician because we can do it every four years, but we don't get rid of our middle management. And they're the ones that drag their feet, they're the ones that do a poor job at doing this. And I think they're the ones that need to lose their jobs because they, I've given them, in my opinion, I've given them time to correct it. If they can't, and some people might say 30 days is not long enough to come up with a solution. And I would say, hold on, that 30 days is more than ample to come up with a solution. And 30 days to implement it is not enough time, but I believe 60 days from the date they started to the day that it has been implemented is more than enough. And then another 30 days to show that there's been an improvement. And if not, people are unemployed. And if they don't think that they can find somebody to replace them, there was nobody there before, we all did it ourselves. And we employ more people in AHS, in EMS than there was in the province of Alberta for all the EMS totally, just in their department without including the EMTs and the paramedics and the EMRs and the mechanics, none of them. If you look at their org chart, their org chart is, instead of being a pyramid, it's upside down. And, you know, the people on the bottom are working their hearts out and the people in the middle and the top don't really seem to really care, so there's my rant. Anyway, moving on to, but the next one that was at was a SEWA executive, REOI closes on the 20th of the month, it had nothing to do with the election, but unfortunately it's fallen on the same day. We've had 32 packages taken out and we removed the two that, one's a duplicate. One company has taken out two because they have two different parts of their company and the other one is the, our HDR, which is our engineers on record, and so we're down to 20, well, 30, 30 that have been taken, that we anticipate something from. And so we're hoping to have something back in the hands of the exec, of the board members for the last meeting in September. Attended the mayor's remees by Zoom and out of that was the discussion on that Jason brought up, RNA, about the policing. That was probably the majority of it, Joseph was the only MLA that attended, there was no MPs, which is not abnormal because of the election. And, but there was 25 on the Zoom call at one time, you know, one or two then started to drop off, but it was around 25, which is about half of what we usually get when we have it in person. And then again too, when we had person in the past, we've always had more MLAs and more MPs, but again, you know, it's potentially timing. Joseph was there, took a few questions, but most of it was related around the, the lack of or the potential COVID restrictions and the COVID cards or lack of not having the cards or, you know, what we should do, why we should have, why we shouldn't. The liability issues and the moral issues and, and the post, our best friend issues, so. And so that was probably the majority of the meeting on those ones. I do have doctor retention tomorrow night and then I have a, a UNA, oh, a SEWA is doing a presentation to the AUNA. One of their, can't remember what the name of the board is, but it's one of their board groups that we're meeting with on Wednesday, again, Zoom or whatever you want to call it. I was just trying to see if it says here, it's just a, you know, AUNA SEWA presentation at 1:35. So that's the first we've had an opportunity to, I think that's it for me, unless somebody's got some questions.
When you said you went to Nanton, Clarisone, was this the same meeting as was here? I was away and I couldn't really know what was going on.
Yeah, I went to, I thought, well, I'd drive over and just see them and see what, see what they had and, you know, and unfortunately, I think it's, it's, you know, I don't think their numbers should, should scare us that they didn't have that many. I still think that part of our reason that we got such a good number here is because of the heavy Facebook presence that we had, that some of the municipalities haven't had. Some of it was very, the Facebook presentation presence was very negative. And so that I think that brought up people to find out what the true answers were, questions were.
I think partly, probably because summertime and people being away before everything was shut down, you know?
Well, I mean, I think it's a concern, I mean, I know of a person just yet, two weeks, less than two weeks ago, that they called for an ambulance that came from Brooks to Vulcan. I was out at Little Bow Resort doing a service call down there and this guy, I don't know if he knew who I was or what I was doing other than doing the service call, but he meant it and it was really disappointing and alarming of what he had to say. You know, like very disappointing, alarming of what he had to say about EMS.
Well, I just know personally from like three years ago, it took an hour for an ambulance to, to come from Oktow, so.
So anyway, I mean, I think Lyle's comments were very well received for what he had said about how, you know, but I mean, this isn't, this is not new. It's, it's just that this has only, it's, I guess it has broken the back of more of the municipalities are starting to realize, but we have noticed and knew that there was a problem since, not day one, but at least, at least maybe day two.
Well, that's what I was just wondering when I was asking him, if, if the numbers have really increased or if it's, more people are aware.
Well, I, I think part, go ahead, Lyle.
I was just gonna say, I've got some stats there, I'm just passing them on.
But, but I think too, unfortunately, AHS is not friendly to share their stats with us. So now we're, we're trying, Doug is trying to glean some of this information because he's there and watches the ambulance leave or, and then he tries to glean where it's at and on and on.
He's also put in flight requests for, for that as well.
And, and so unfortunately, they're not as friendly to, to share it. And, and Paul sits on an organization that we belong to too that has a little bit of information, but, I mean, they can only share as much as they can through the, through the dispatch and the issues that they've had through the dispatch, but again.
I just think about banging against the brick walls and it's great when you stop.
And again, I was part of the group that chose, maybe chose, choose isn't the proper terminology, but that was involved in when they was turned over to AHS. But it is our fault as municipalities, five, because we were the ones that requested AHS take it over. And it started off as we never requested them to take it over, we asked them to fund it. And they said, if we have to fund it because it's an extension of the hospital, then we will run it because it's an extension of the hospital. And what did we do? We just got ourselves in bed with the devil. Because it just added a huge department that has grown and has grown and grown, but yet the people on the bottom of the pile have not increased in the same ratio as the people in the middle and the top. So there comes a time when it's, there's going to be a reckoning somehow, there's going to be a huge issue somehow.
Your thoughts on hiring are somewhat similar to mine, I just think the middle third of the pyramid, you're gone.
Well, I, I know the top of the AHS ambulance director personally, so him and I know people quite well. But anyway. Any other questions? If not, thank you very much and thank you for listening to my rant. Somebody wished to. Thank you, George Lee. Any question on George Lee's or discussion of George Lee's motion? Here you go, we'll call a question.
Sure, you can ask.
Great, thank you, you can see why I didn't put my name down to sit on this committee because I'm too passionate. But there are other people in the community that I think would, would love to give their opinions, that have been involved in EMS since this inception almost in our community.
I may be coming to talk to you later.
Okay, thank you very much, we'll move on to administrative reports, the activity management reports.
So as you can see, everything from the last meeting has been dealt with, unless there's any questions on any of the outstanding items. Currently still working on. Okay, on to my CAO report now.
No questions for him on that? Okay, CEO.
So I was able to get the lease agreement for a lot of the air port done and we've actually received development government for development of a new bank, we're hopefully going to be going in fairly quickly. We dealt with a few issues that were related to the power outage on August 10th. As you know, the majority of town well for a significant amount of time, so I've actually worked with a few businesses and that that made a request, we have a Ford as public relations rep, making sure that they had contact information. We have a Fordas Public Relations rep making sure that they had contact information to, so that Fordas knows the impacts, not only on our residents, but on our businesses in our community when something like that happens. And hopefully they'll be able to take that experience and hopefully be able to work some redundancy into the system so we don't experience something like that, quite like that ever again. I know they're acts of nature, but yeah. We did the occupancy for the nine oh line brewery, drafted a new airport service agreement for the flying club. It's been with flying club for a couple of weeks now for review and we're gonna bring that back. Hopefully have an airport committee meeting and something brought back councils fairly quickly. Drafted the letter for the pool operator, anybody that was involved in the pool operations this year. We drafted a letter from behalf of the council there thanking them for working through the challenges of this season and for a good year and hoping that they'll come back next season for another year. Also working with the funeral home, he's looking at moving forward to phase three of the Colombarian, which for those of you that don't know, the Colombarian that's out of the cemetery was privately funded and the town owns it. But the capital was put up by the Vulcan Funeral Home and then we entered into an agreement for the sale of those niches. And so as that fills up, he just keeps adding to the end and we're now to the point where it looks like phase three is going to be, so we'll be bringing that back as a promotional account as well. Just trying to work with Pat to put the agreement and pricing together for the new phase. We've been working with Horace quite a bit on unusual questions that have come up. Again, you guys just saw a bylaw change for residents for multi use. We had a lot of conversation on since only old houses that have been sold in residential or from residential to commercial and industrial or what the impacts of letting those continue to be residents and those sort of things. So we'll get through those. The new C A O is in the champion, I'm sure that you're all aware of who it is. It's Larry Barron. So he used to be the county administrator years ago. So, and he flipped in town for quite a long time now, was working up north. So I've been helping him with procedural documents in the last couple of weeks. Our ongoing provision of information to Lancaster, I think we're still just providing them information and trying to move forward as we've been working, talking with Nat quite a bit as well. They're, they've got an active development there. They just went through the purchase of some lots over there. So we're just keeping in contact with them and see how that experience is flowing over there as well. And from that, I obviously was on vacation for two weeks in there. He approved of the last meeting and the gig that we reviewed our I D contract.
Any questions for Kim?
So as part of my report, if I can, council had requested that I put out there for communications meeting, possibly one before the election and then another one following the election for the new councils. Put it out there and September thirtieth was the date that we kind of landed on that seemed to work with all the communities and everything. And then they put the masks back on. So I just wanted to see if council wanted to fall through. We won't be able to do a meal or anything or anything like that. But if you want to continue moving forward, trying to have two meetings or one or.
We pivot to the thirty is not the next meeting because it's a.
Because it's the holiday. Yes, 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 I will throw that back out there too. I kinda wanted to just get your feelings on, on whether you, with the restrictions in place, if you would like to try to, because that's the whole reason why the communications meetings came to an end was because of the restrictions. That was before masks were mandatory or any value. Just kind of wanted to get, because there was no formal motion made to actually do it. It was just to reach out, find out. They were all on board until this came back. And then I said that I would check with you guys to see if we might do the R hosting ones.
What's your thoughts, Horace?
George Lee's got a big smile.
Well, I don't know, maybe the mask thing will be gone by the first part of October. Because if you can't do it on September thirtieth, wouldn't it go into the first week of October?
Yeah, it'd be the second of October.
Yeah, so.
And, and, and again, you know, whether you're, because from an emergency management standpoint, we're gonna have to have one of those, but whether we have that as an orientation for the big counselors coming on or. So that was one of the discussions. And to be completely honest, a two-hour meeting in the lodge hall, we're gonna struggle to get the proper offer room for everybody in there as well. But we can, we can make the work we've done before.
And my thoughts are, I mean, with the election coming up, I mean, I understand the emergency management, but I'm not sure if we really need to do that communication one just because, I mean, we're gonna have a meeting and then quite a few people aren't gonna be, it would just be a meeting to have a meeting, right? Because a lot of the counselors, you know, may or may not be, and that's why maybe we just wait until after and try to do something in November.
Part of the feeling behind having a communication meeting was to showcase the pool to the other communities.
Yeah, we can still do tours with this. We weren't gonna be able to do barbecue or anything like that, but we originally discussed.
What's your thoughts?
My thought is, when you mentioned about the pool, I think it would be really nice to take everyone through and kind of show them what a wonderful facility we have, especially since there were maybe perhaps some namesayers before, and I think they need to see how well it turned out and what a great summit we have.
I have friends coming down from Duett.
Sorry?
I have friends coming down from Duett just to use the pool. Very impressive.
So.
I don't know whether you want to wait and just have the new council do it next spring or.
Well, I think that, well, they'll, they'll probably do, try to do something either in November, December for sure to bring all the, all the councils together and discuss what the pros and the cons and why the communication philosophy is there to bring every municipality together and showcase what each one can offer and give and do. So I think Paul's and George Lee's thought of doing it, you know, prior to is, is great because like I said, showcase to the community what we thought and what's there. And, but I think Lyle's point too is that, you know, with the election coming up, how many other municipality members are gonna come out and say that either this is gonna be their last kick of the cat or they're not even throwing any of the hat. So I'm not sure.
Yeah, originally when it was proposed as more of a social, like, you know, last one for this one, new introduction for this one, they, everybody was kind of on board. Again, no restrictions in place, any of that stuff. If you're going back to just no meal, no nothing and it's a meeting, then it goes to what Lyle said. It's a meeting to have hold a meeting. We are gonna tie the emergency management stuff to it, but we just have to have that done before the end of the year. So we don't need to have two of those. We just need to, like, from a, from a legal standpoint, so.
Do it in November.
Okay, so Paul's kind of leaning towards after the election, George Lee?
Yeah, I would say November or whenever.
Yeah, after the election, Paul or.
After the election.
Okay. Michelle, I should ask instead of.
I even turned her name tag over to you.
Oh, I turned it over. Still didn't clue in when I was saying you didn't have the paper, shouldn't read the paper.
Whenever it works for everybody.
Okay, so kind of consensus is to leave that after the election, after the election.
I'll just, and to be completely honest at this point, it's the C A O's speaking on behalf of their councils. They just, you know, it's the villages that have three, they just talk to a couple of councils. What did you think? So with that day, obviously gonna have to change anyway because of the holiday. We'll just, I'll just reach out and say that we'd be having a host after the election.
Okay, anything else on Kim's?
All right, Lord.
That's it? Okay, moving on to Melvin Kirk's report. Any questions on her report? Okay, moving on to Public Works.
Public Works finished up the, the pads on the disc calls. Stu mentioned that they, he's hoping they're just about done all their concrete work for this year. It's been a large volume year for concrete. I guess we're gonna have a regular meeting. I guess I can let you know, Stu's actually on holidays this week, so he will be coming out this week. Jordy has put his resignation from his position of Public Works, so we'll probably be advertising fairly quickly. Moving on to Green Grass's.
It's still there?
He's been with us for about five years.
Okay, any other questions or queries on Stu's report? How many, so many students that he had this year?
Yes.
Before, yeah, okay. Okay, moving on to community services. Little bit of stats on, on the pool and the other facilities. I think that's what, you know, we're gonna need to do is kind of do a bit of number crunching to see what our operational costs were and kind of do some comparisons so it gives the people an idea of what, what we did in the past and what we're doing this year. Same with staffing numbers and.
And we're currently waiting on Western Rack and Ward Brothers for the official, inside their contract for shutdown and winterization. So Stu did drain the pool. They wanted us to keep it circulating until they got to us, which was not very cost effective for operations. So we drained the pool and, you know, we did, we did the things that we knew inside that. But yeah, we're gonna be coming up, walking through that commissioning portion of the, of the winterization.
What about deficiencies?
Yeah, yeah, they've got a list of stuff they're supposed to be working with, with Ward Brothers. Western Rack is gonna drive it up through the winterization. Ward Brothers will deal with any deficiency items.
Because of the floor.
Yeah, the spots on the floor.
Like three hundred and sixty degrees east to west, north to south. Okay, anything else on, on Lillian Bonney's? Like George Lee said, she highlighted some of the stuff that has been going on. Went to tourist center, sorry.
I was just curious about staffing. I know we had people quite upset because, you know, pool was shut down for a while during certain days. But then when you realize that it, it was on the news, I mean, on all three major news channels that it apparently was just Vulcan, just with.
Staff shortages, the staff shortages and training.
Just wondering if there's any thoughts on how, I guess it's hard to forecast, but how things will get, if things will get back on track next year, like with all the training or?
Yeah, so, so as you guys were made aware, as it was progressing through, we, we hired anybody that had the, the ability to be certified in and we went through the process. So even some of the young trainees that we got in place are now starting that process. I know Tom talked about it an awful lot, every pool that's been built, they've always lost staff, that sort of thing. It was unusual with us with COVID that it was province wide, but we were anticipating that. Thought we had done the right thing by hiring someone. Because there was a shortage, we actually lost them to other places because they can work closer to their homes so that you don't, those sort of things. So Bonnie, when I talked to her at the end, the season here was fairly confident that next year's people that are coming in were gonna be in a way better position than they were last year. Again, you always run that risk of them taking positions somewhere else. But you know, all things said and done, we had a pretty exciting pool to be, to be at this year.
Well, I think it's something we should be proud of and I'm sure a lot of those people that were complaining would have seen those news reports and are probably have already apologized to Lyle.
If we, if we weren't closed, I'm sure they would be there, yes, doing that. But yes, so yeah, we're anticipating that next year, next season, we'll hopefully have less challenges on staffing portion. And it's really nice because we also found out what positions can be filled with volunteers, with the office setup, not needing a lifeguard to actually sit and check people in and that sort of things. What kind of rotation and all that, so.
And some of them, we should be able to get training throughout the winter too.
That's, that's right. If we keep the facilities open again this year, if there was still facilities in California not open.
Oh, I see those kinds, yes.
Well, it did show, I mean, we think about Lakeridge, only opened three of the facilities for swimming pools that weren't open up, you know, like normal three bit outside ones that were open and that was it of all, of, of fives.
I think, yeah, we had a lot that were closed.
Yeah, I think you're right, a lot of it is. So I mean, I, I think that Lyle's comment about how the, the press, you know, discussed that other municipalities were having issues with staffing and how we tried to work through it. I'm sure there are some people in the community, like Al said, that are probably wishing they would never have said what they said, but, you know, they did and now they're regretting it because they saw that it's not just us that are, you know.
And on the other side, that's the reason why some, we have as much traffic as we did is we have people coming from all over the province to, to come to our facility. So, you know, that's, as Paul said, you have friends come all the ways away and that showcases our community as well. That's again, why we, why we drafted that letter on behalf of council. That's why everyone, I, I know that everyone that I talked to received one was, they appreciate that support that was given to them this year as well. Which will hopefully bring them back.
So any other thoughts or comments on anything else on Bonney's? Okay, if not, move on to the peace officers.
Yeah, they wanted me to bring up to council as the speed science, just got a pack out on the Conamara focusing on return to school. And again, to remind everyone, although they may not be on there recording speeds, so she does assert them out with them off and with them on, make sure that she's getting an accurate depiction of how traffic is behaving in that area. Just because they're off, you may still want to smile at the camera when you go by.
In some municipalities, you can tell that it's off, but it's still taken because the light shows you that.
You really clear someone again?
Well, there's, and NAP has one over on their, on their 26th Street and it, it's green, it's not, and so it tells you what your speed is and it's because they're, you know, lower their speed limit to 40 throughout their whole community.
The ones, and we're gonna actually, we did actually discuss that this morning, the ones in Clare's home, they, they, they're the same as ours and they can be set up in different phases for anything, so we can set them up in stealth mode where they shut off but still record, they can be on and flashing. If you go over the speed limit, they'll start to flash and there's a function in there that Clare's home was used at the other day when I was there, that I noticed that worked really well on somebody else. It, if you are over a certain range above it, whether it be, you can set it between, you know, 10 o'clock or increments or whatever, and it goes, it, it does just a white flash so it looks like it's taking a picture of you. That certainly slowed down the guy that was next to me. Yeah, so it, it, it just, it just flashed and I noticed that, yeah, it, it really caught the attention rather than just the number jumping around, so. We talked about, ours have the capability to do that as well, so.
Okay, so any thoughts or questions on bodies? Okay, if not, we'll move on to fire chiefs. He's got two there for July and one for August, so the first one's the July one. And the second one is the August one, so you can see how that one goes. You know, out of the eight calls, seven of them were medical related in August. And July, again, out of the three, two of them were medical related. For, for our municipality.
They talked about the Dunk Fan, I participated in that well and really well attended at the slot days.
All good.
They had quite a few volunteers go through it and did really well.
Okay, any questions on PDA's reports? If not, somebody wish to, to file the administrative reports? Any discussion on the motions motion? Hearing none, call a question.
Kerry DeNelson.
Okay, Kerry DeNelson, thank you. Motion to adjourn. Shell, thank you. Take out right that day. Any discussion on the Shell's motion? Hearing none, call a question. And I'm sure as Kerry DeNelson, thank you very much, everybody.
Yes.
I don't know what to say, it's a full day, please. I don't know if it matters, but everyone except for four all said defeated.